I think you're right. We just did.
Yeah, I think so too. Once we get everybody seated, we can get going.
You guys could take, you know, go upstairs and take a nappy and...
Do you mean twice next week or just once? Do you mean next week?
Once.
I think we do once.
Once.
On the 9th.
I think it's just around.
On Thursday, not Wednesday.
And then you're off for a couple of weeks before the hospital.
The fourth or something. Yeah, I think so.
We're ready when you want to. I'm on it on the morning.
You're ready? Okay, Leslie, are you ready?
We're ready.
Okay. Let's start the committee meeting seven o'clock and we'll just jump into Leslie Johnson. If you have introductions on your side briefly.
Yes, I will introduce Leslie Johnson, the zoning administrator, and I'd like to introduce Lily Yagazu with my staff. She's been with us all over the year now.
Just a reminder.
And she comes to us from San Francisco, so she's very familiar with some of the topic of short-term rentals that we're going to be talking about today. And she's going to be the lead staff person. And before she kind of walks you through the presentation this evening, James and I had a conversation this afternoon. And I guess for the purposes, you know, as we had talked about back in March, you know, we wanted to, one of our goals is to come to you earlier in the process to talk about amendments that are going to be, that we're working on. Well, we're working on short-term rentals. And, but I, but this is a, tonight's presentation is a 40,000-foot level. You know, we're just going to give you basic information. We're going to share the website with you, you know, kind of let you know what we're looking for as far as outreach and how we're moving forward with it. It's our intent, and we think this is, you know, and as Lily will tell you, we've already gotten quite a bit of response from our survey, that this is a topic that we're going to hear a lot from both citizens and community. And so we intend to come back to you. This is not going to be the only time you have an opportunity to provide comment, that we would come back to you probably after we've done our outreach. And we're meeting with the board in July to give them kind of an overview and get a little bit more direction. And then I, we were thinking in September, perhaps, to come back to the land use committee and give you, where we'll have more specific proposals and concepts that we would want your reaction to. So, again, I didn't want you to think that this was the only opportunity that you all were going to have to provide comments, and I do hope that you do fill out our survey. So with that, I'm going to let Lily take over and walk you through the presentation, and then I'm sure we'll have time if you want to ask specific questions or comments. Is that all right?
No, yeah, I think we should just go over each section on the agenda, then if we have questions, go from there rather than get through the whole thing.
Okay. Right. So as Leslie mentioned, we are here taking this opportunity to give you an update on the proposed zoning ordinance amendment on short-term rentals, what we have done so far, and the timeline information on what we have planned that we're going to the board for final approval or decision. I'll start off with a definition of a short-term rental. They're typically defined as transient occupancy of dwelling units for less than 30 consecutive days. Short-term rentals are often processed and advertised through platforms like Airbnb, FlipKey, VRBO, and HomeAway and some other such websites. Before you or included in your packet is a summary of our current zoning ordinance provisions that regulate dwellings and occupancy of dwellings and where or what type of transient occupancy is permitted. There are no provisions in the current zoning ordinance that allow a dwelling unit to be occupied for transient occupancy or for less than 30 days, other than a bed and breakfast that is approved by the Board of Supervisors through a special exception application. In doing our background research, we found one such application that was approved back in 2002. And in further looking into it, it doesn't appear that it's operating currently. And I think it's not being...
That was in Ameson District if I'm not mistaken.
Right. We found the address on Arlington. And so it doesn't appear to be operating at this time.
There's one of me here.
To that. Also in your packet is a state bill that was approved and signed by the governor in March of 2017, SB 1578. As a background, during the 2015 and 2016 session, there was a great deal of review of short-term rental topics by the General Assembly, industry representatives concerned and interested citizens, local jurisdictions, as well as other stakeholders. Some of the discussions included maybe prohibiting local regulation of such uses, extensive fines, and some other provisions. However, in 2017, the General Assembly passed this regulation before you that would permit local jurisdictions to require short-term rentals to register or to develop some type of regulation that addresses land use issues. There is a very clear perception that this provides a window of opportunity for Virginia jurisdictions to come up with, an opportunity to come up with a regulation and a registry. And however, in terms of the online platform industries, the industry remains very vigilant in their effort to limit regulations that would hinder their business model, you know, and staff is currently working with other jurisdictions in this area, including Arlington County, Alexandria City, Loudoun County, and some other jurisdictions in the tidewater area, as well as the Virginia Municipal League, to discuss, you know, issues that may be coming up and how to come up with a regulation that would work for larger, for other jurisdictions as well as us, and collaborate in coming up with some type of regulations.
Mr. Chairman. Did you say to wait to ask questions, or we could ask questions in each section?
As we got through the section, I was hoping then we'd ask questions, but if you had a question right now...
Well, I have a question about that section, which is about the bill.
Okay, Mr. Oldfield, go ahead.
Who originated the bill in the General Assembly? What jurisdiction were they from?
You would ask that question. I don't have that in...
I could get back to you on that though.
I thought it was Normant from James City County, Williamsburg.
That might have been.
And they have that issue there.
Yeah, that's why I was trying to draw the, you know, connection.
No, you should shake your head now.
Yeah.
Somebody emailed me today, said it's Normant, Senate District 3, where is that?
It's Williamsburg.
He's, I think...
He represents Williamsburg for Public Affairs.
I heard that from the record sources. I think the last couple of days, although I did not look it up myself.
Sure, I don't know.
Or Turner last night said that.
No, he was pushing a portion of it, but I don't know if he was the patron.
We can get that information.
I should follow up.
It's not key, it's just, I just wanted to get a feel for what was, where, what location, what issues were driving the initial...
Well, again, this was, well, there was another bill the previous year in 2016 that was, Jill Vogel had pushed through that was, that we had real concerns about, and then that's what also precipitated the Housing and Community Development down in Richmond to do a work session to kind of see if there could be some consensus build, and there really wasn't. So that was, and we were, we had staff down there, Claudia Arco and Chris Costa had gone to some of those meetings to be present. And that one was basically taking away all local authority. And so this bill, you know, preserves local, the locality's ability to regulate and gives us the ability, if we choose to do it, to register, to require a registry. And it also, that's the one that Chris Costa was discussing, you know, about the...
Got it. It's okay.
It is definitely Senator Normant.
Yeah, I, thank you. Answered, asked and answered.
Okay.
I just have one question if I could.
Commissioner Flanagan?
Yeah. On the occupancy, there are people who rent for like two weeks to one person, and then two weeks to another person, and two weeks to another person. They don't get caught up in this because each of those occupancies is not, is less than 30 days? Or is it if you're renting out full-time to different people for short periods of time?
That would be a short-term rental.
That would be a short-term, so in other words, it...
Now, somebody, I mean, if somebody wanted to, they could rent, I mean, and that's one of the things that if we move forward, we will be defining short-term rental. So we're going to add that definition to the zoning ordinance.
That's a question.
But it's defined in the state code as occupancy of less than 30 days. So if somebody rents to someone for 45 days and has a lease, you know, that's technically not short-term rental. So we'll have to look at that. But, but again, if somebody were to rent for, somebody for two weeks, and then another two weeks, and then another two weeks, that would, I would consider that to be short-term rental.
When do they become a boarding house?
I would say, you know, well, it's a, that's a good, I mean, a boarding house, you could, you know, deals with, you could have someone that's at a boarding house that has more than 30 days occupancy.
Exactly.
But then it gets into over occupancy and how many people, because under our current provisions, you can only have four unrelated people occupying.
I think the point is, this is, this is very targeted to the Airbnb and the short-term rental of private residences to unrelated persons.
Commissioner Hart?
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, maybe I'm putting you on the spot, but I kind of remember a case, a BZA case off Route 1, maybe 10 years ago. There was a guy, and he was kind of doing this, he was, he had a website up, he was advertising, and it wasn't a motel exactly, but it was a house. And he fixed it up, and it was pretty nice, but it was like renting out the house if you were coming to DC for a wedding or something like that. And I thought he got a violation for something, I don't know what, and I thought we upheld, and I don't think it went to court, but I don't know what, I don't know what he violated.
I think you're correct. I was, I was thinking it was in the Oakton area, but it may have been Malburne, there may have been...
I thought it was like a block off Route 1.
And it might have been, but yes, we have had a, previous situations where someone has, you know, advertised as like a vacation rental, where you can come and spend a week. And we did have a case that did, you're correct, I don't remember the timeline, but it did go to the BZA and we did uphold it. I don't know...
He was in violation of something, I don't remember what.
Right. Well, we would, we would deem, we deemed it to be a motel, a hotel motel, which is not, which is not a permitted use in the residential district.
Got it.
And, and I don't know if that was before we had the bed and breakfast provisions.
Daily, weekly, or similar short-term basis, so maybe that's...
Right.
So I'll, I'll continue with the website and the citizen survey. Staff has developed a website and updated information on the website regarding upcoming meetings, what the outreach efforts would be, and also a link to a new survey that would address some of the items or issues that other jurisdictions we know have addressed. And we wanted to get, get a sense or gauge the public and see the tolerance level, find out what they would want us to consider in any regulations that we would be coming up with. And the link to the survey is included in, on the agenda. Also, I have a copy of the survey questions on the website, if you're not able to bring it up.
Commissioner Hurley?
Who vetted the survey, who went through the questions? I've had several complaints from the community, our 90th committee on Tuesday night, the Braddock District met, and they expressed serious concerns about it, like, why didn't you ask about parking, why didn't you ask about traffic? I mean, there was space, I looked it up, and there is space at the end to add whatever. But that was part of the community engagement. At what point could the land use committees have a chance to look at the survey before it goes live or something? I mean, it fits into that whole community engagement process.
Well, we are going to, we are going to, I mean, this is just one tool that we're using to gauge, get feedback. I mean, we are going to be scheduling outreach meetings, probably in different parts of the county to have it.
Before the survey itself. I mean, who says, yeah, these are the right questions to ask?
We, we, there is a, there is a method to doing surveys, and we worked with our Public Affairs office to put the survey together. We came up with some questions. We had a lot more than what, what got published, but in the interest of, you know, making sure that we did get responses, that it's not too long, that, because if it's too long, people won't finish it. And we didn't want to prejudge the answers, so that's why we didn't add specific questions about parking. We tried to leave it more open-ended to give folks an opportunity to, you know, not be, we didn't want to prejudge certain things. So that's, that's why it's there. You know, if, if I can, I've looked at, we've already getting responses, and I've kind of, you know, been able to scroll, we haven't had a chance to really, you know, analyze it, and we're going to be working with Public Affairs to do that. But people are writing a lot of comments, and, you know, they're telling us, we don't want it, you know, we'll talk about, there are some comments on parking, so I think we're getting that information. But, but that was the rationale for why, you know, we didn't have as many specific questions. So, and again, we did work with our Public Affairs staff, who kind of are experts in that area to kind of determine what...
Leslie, just, when did the survey start and when does it stop?
So it started on July 19th, last, uh, 2019. I'm sorry, July 19th, yes. This past Monday. And it will close on August 31st. We wanted to get as much feedback as possible, and we will continue monitoring their responses as they come in. If I may, I could continue to the next item, which is outreach and next steps. And as part of our next steps, we are scheduled to go before the Board's Development Process Committee on July 18th. And we hope to get enough response by then for us to analyze and give them, present the response results, even though we know we're going to get additional responses until August 31st. We also hope to come back before this commission, this commission and committee before, with the results.
Well, let me just ask the committee, and before we move off the survey, if we have any other questions or comments, since they're going to the Development Process Committee, and they can take any concerns that we might have, if there's anything else on the survey. Commissioner Hurley?
It's exactly those dates, as we've said over and over again, from June 19th to August 31st, most families are gone, the homeless associations, the civic associations aren't meeting, et cetera.
You've got 2,700 responses already.
A lot of people are getting the word out, but they're feeling like you're doing this during the summer again. And I get feedback, maybe Braddock District is weird that everybody goes on vacation for two months, but anytime we try to do anything during the summer, I get pushback.
Well, and I appreciate that, but, you know, part of it is that we're trying to progress.
You want to keep working.
And we need to keep working, and so we aren't going to have any meetings in August. I mean, we kind of, that, that is clear. We, we're going to try to set up at least an initial outreach, citizen outreach meeting in July, maybe two, and then have another follow-up in September, so that, you know, we're providing ample opportunity for folks to, to come out. Also, our web, you know, the, the survey also links back to our website, and there is an email, our, our admin email is on that, and we say, if you have comments or questions, you know, email us. And we've been getting quite a few emails on that, you know, with people submitting information. So I really think, you know, we were shocked to see how many responses we had gotten just in one day. We pushed it out through Nextdoor.
Nextdoor.
That was my question. Yes, we did.
So, I don't remember seeing that, because I'm the moderator, I'm next door.
Commissioner Strand, just let Commissioner Sargent go.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry. We were having a conversation about that and that kind of... Apologies.
One question, a comment, I think, I know it's very early in the process. Well, how would you characterize, you said a lot of people, they don't want them at all. Is that a strong...
Well, we, I mean, I was just scrolling through, I mean, it was like, so we're, we're going to put together, we're going to start probably next week, starting to capture some of this, and, you know, we'll be able to put some information together. I mean, I'm just, it's just a very cursory review that, that we're getting, but we haven't kind of sat down and done that.
Well, it got your attention, and I think that's, I guess what I'm suggesting here is I look at those, clicked on the link to the survey, and it starts with Fairfax County is considering the development of new zoning regulations for short-term rentals that may address such factors as, and then you, you know, you take the survey and people say we don't like it. I think there's a disconnect there, because it says, this is, it almost can sound like an initiative from the county. It is an initiative from the county to regulate it, but it's not to authorize it. In other words, you may want to include information saying where the authority comes from, so that it doesn't seem that we are initiating this, this effort to allow Airbnb or other short-term rentals in here. It is indeed something regulated by, you know, some higher authority than the county that, you know, over the usurps. In that sense, our authority to say yes or no, that's why we are looking at regulation.
Right. And we do have something on the main, on our main webpage that talks about why changes are being proposed, and we reference the Senate bill, and we put a link to that too, so, which gives localities the authority to require. So we do have some of, we do have that...
You know, you may want to just add that, cut and paste, and add that to the website.
To the survey page, you mean?
It's right here. The problem is, it's down below. It says why, why changes are being proposed, and then it has a statement about the Senate bill and so on.
Yeah, I think we often, we are often in the offshoot of authorities beyond our jurisdiction, whether it's, you know, some other zoning ordinance or something. And it's helpful to say, here's where it came from. So it's good to hear, but make it as clear as possible, maybe move it up a little bit.
Commissioner Strand, do you have anything?
Um, no.
Saved by the call.
That's Nextdoor.
If she's not ready, I'm ready.
Phil and I were just talking, I had asked him how it had gotten out, and so when you said Nextdoor, that was an exclamation point, and I apologize for jumping in. So, but I didn't receive it, so I'll go back and, and look and see, and I'll push it out to my neighborhood.
Okay.
To make sure that they see it. There was someone in one of our townhouses, townhouses, sorry.
That's what they break this time.
That had someone living next door that was renting out, and it was quite a problem. So I appreciate that. Boy Scout camping trip is tomorrow, so both husband and son are calling me, so I apologize. Yeah, it's just my night.
Commissioner Oldfield and Commissioner Flanagan?
I did receive it on the Nextdoor in Great Falls.
Did you see it?
I did get it that way. But the, the survey is very basic, it's very crude in sense of, it's not fancied up. The, I mean, if, if your answer, if you don't want them, you answer the first one by saying nowhere, and the second one by never, and the third one, none, and the fourth one, zero. And that would be the correct answer if you completely opposed. Look, the problem is that what this situation does, it sets up people, most residents who live in a residential neighborhood are going to say, I don't want it in my neighborhood, period. But there are people who do it, do it well, and it's an economic, it's an, it's an economic benefit to them. And they, they can do it in a way that if you regulate it in terms of the parking issues and how many people and so on at a time, can have very little impact on their neighbors. And the neighbors may in fact never know if they're doing it. So the problem with the survey is you're kind of setting it up for a whole bunch of people to say, forget it, we don't want it, without being able to have the discussion and debate about circumstances under which it might be appropriate, and why it might be appropriate, and why it has some economic impact for, for people in the county. And, and so I think you're going to have to take the results of the survey with a grain of salt. Hopefully, with the range of comments you may get along with the survey answers, you know, some more detailed comments, it might give you some insight and input. Now, my last question is, how, how are you going to identify those different stakeholders to have them come in and make their presentations as to what they think is reasonable and why it's important to them, as opposed to people who just say, I should never have it in a residential neighborhood? How do you, how, how do you identify, how do you go about identifying the people who are doing Airbnb on some kind of regular basis and some of the others, so that they're on notice that this is going on, and that they have a chance to put their ore and water in connection with the development of this and the discussion?
Well, I would assume that, you know, if they're living in the, you know, neighborhood, that they would have gotten the same survey and they, and I...
Me.
And they would respond. I mean, we're, as part of our outreach, I mean, I don't know how we, and I have to think about how, you know, if we wanted to have just a stakeholder meeting of just people who do Airbnb, I mean, we can get it from the industry side of it. I mean, we've met with, we've already met with, you know, a couple folks that, you know, from the hospitality industry that have had some comments. But you're talking about residents who do it and may do well. They may not want them, they may not want them.
The Marriott executives may not think it's a great idea, too. And so that's one side, within the hospitality business. But, you know, Airbnb is really popular, and there's a reason. And if it's, it can be done in a way where it meets someone's personal needs, and at the same time, people, you may even find that there are people who live in the county who travel a lot and use Airbnb a lot themselves, who, but who may not, who may or may not do it in their home. And that those kind of people, it would be helpful to hear from them as well.
We did ask a question to that effect, I think, in the survey.
The last question, I think, we asked whether, you know...
How many, how many, yeah.
If you've used Airbnb's short-term rentals.
Oh, you did? This, oh, okay, I just saw the four questions.
There's, there's 10 questions.
Oh, that's the fuller survey, okay, yeah.
Commissioner Oldfield, I think, as Ms. Johnson stated earlier, that the survey is just one way we're getting input.
I agree.
They'll be going out to the community, and we had discussed also a possible workshop if this is to that level in September at the Planning Commission, therefore, more people can come and air their, one way or the other, which side they're on. And possibly that's a central clearinghouse for this.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
Commissioner Flanagan?
This is part of a new phenomenon of home industries, so to speak, Uber, of course, and those are, I presume these are going to be licensed for some way?
That's part of what we're going to be looking at.
We don't know that that will be a decision, but, but at least we're going to look at that.
And they, and the bill allows the county to require registration. Now, how that works, whether it's, you know, we've been having some thoughts about, you know, because we could create a home occupation permit for this type of use, but then, you know, do we want to just have a one-stop shop where somebody comes in and they're, you know, if they're going to do this, it's registered, then it goes, you know, tax, tax can use it, we can use it, enforcement can use it in case there's issues. So those are all issues that we're still kind of, you know, thinking about.
For instance, we have housing standards at present time about occupancy, you can only have so many people in a bedroom and that sort of thing. But we don't license houses or go out and inspect them to make sure that that exists or that's even occurring. In this particular case, where it's, it's a business that we're talking about here, where we're going to be basing our, if we do do some licensing, it'll be based upon... where we're going to be basing our, if we do do some licensing, it'll be based upon the fact that they are a business, I take it. Even though we don't, for Uber people, we don't, we don't license them or exactly any kind of fee from people who practice that.
I think we're definitely going to need to make the distinction between someone, an investor, who buys a home and doesn't live in it and is renting it out for commercial purposes. That is totally something that would be not permitted. You know, because even with a bed and breakfast, you have to have an operator in the home. And so those, see, that's one extreme that I think, you know, we all agree is problematic. And then you have the other situation, and this is where it's, we're going to have to look at, is where someone who owns a home, and we actually were talking to Bill Lakos over it, we had a meeting with him, because Penny recommended, you know, him as far as a citizen, you know, in Lake Barcroft, which is a unique situation because they're on the lake, you know, they have a beach, and, you know, what they're seeing is people still live in their home, and it's not like they're absentee owners, but they leave on the, you know, they leave on the weekend and then allow someone else to come in and use that, their home on the weekend through the Airbnb platform. So the question then is, you know, is, how many times should you do that, every weekend? Or do you need to have, as the owner of the home, you know, as your home, do you need to be in the, the, these are some of the issues that we're going to be tackling and looking at, and what some of the other jurisdictions have addressed, is, you know, do you need to be in the home while you rent out the rooms? And I, you know, those are some parameters that we need to kind of wrestle with, and that's what this survey is, you know, hoping to get at also, because, you know, or how many times a year do you allow, if we're going to allow some type of short-term rental, how often? You know, how many people per room, we have a question to that effect. You know, how, because, you know, the last thing we want to do is to provide for any kind of over-occupancy type of situation, and we are going to be, you know, we are having some, continuing some internal, you know, discussions with, like, the building code folks. We know that in Arlington County, the building official there has kind of made a determination that, you know, that these, this home sharing is kind of an accessory use to the residential, and, you know, it's not going to be subject to commercial building codes, if you will.
The reason I bring that up is because in the explanation, we use the word developing regulations. Actually, shouldn't we be saying developing licensing? You can, you see, you can adopt regulations and not have licensing.
True, true. I mean, but I think we want to address the land, you know, what we're trying to do. I think we're going to be doing both. We're going to have some kind of a land use impact, you know, in the zoning ordinance, and then we're going to have to tackle the whole registry and how we want to, you know.
And the other thing is, I don't know how this happened, but I've already filled this form out, and before this briefing, and maybe I want to withdraw that, I'm too. And can I, can I file another survey after this one's over? How many of these surveys can I fill out?
We're not limiting it.
We're not.
Commissioner Sargent on the survey, and then Commissioner Hurd?
Well, I think, for the purposes of the Planning Commission process here, I think it's important to at least sound as neutral as possible, because that's what we should be here. This is a land use issue. We're not deciding whether to advocate it, promote it, or deny it. It's what we have to do through the law, and how we do it, what are our principles or priorities about safety, you know, legal, legal protection, liability? What are our principles? So that we're doing it objectively, we're not seeming to advocate for it, we're not seeming to be against it, because we have, we have, we have a narrow role, we have a land use role, and I think, you know, and I think we should look at it that way. And with that in mind, I may further clarify what is allowed and what is not. For example, one of the last things in the survey is, which type of housing unit should this be allowed in? So what's your opinion? Well, do you have an opinion? By that, I mean, are you allowed at this point in the legal regulatory process to have that opinion of discretion to say, it should go in multifamily units, or it should go in single-family units, or both? So what are we legally allowed to regulate? And I think that's going to help, because obviously, this is going to be a hot-button issue, and the more we appear to be objective and oriented based on a narrow determination of our assignment, I think the better off the process will be.
Well, and I think that the legislation that was adopted by the General Assembly keeps the local authorities, so we have the ability to do those land use regulations and to determine what type of unit that we may want to allow or not allow. I mean, I think, I think we have a broad ability to do that.
I think we can, I think we can make a reasonable format that allows us to cover the things I suggested, or whatever else you feel appropriate as you view it, and still get the job. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Commissioner Hurd?
Two things.
And Commissioner Murphy?
This strikes me in some ways as having overlap with the home childcare situation in a couple important ways. We had regulations that required applications for home childcare, but when, it didn't really matter because the state wasn't really pushing that, and then when the state came up with their requirement that the people, to renew the state license, you had to show local compliance. We found out we had about 500 and some of these operating, and only, I think, 100 or less had come through the process. The vast majority of them were basically illegal and hadn't come through. And at that level, I think there are probably a ton of people doing this. If you, I, out of curiosity, put in Airbnb in Fairfax County, and, you know, there are tons of people doing this, and they may be trying to be under the radar, they may just be clueless, they may think it's perfectly legal right now, and I don't know what happens if someone complains now, but if, at one level, I think it would be helpful for both before and after to try and capture some of those people in the discussion that, I don't know if there's a way to communicate with the folks, because there's dozens of them on the websites operating now, say, hey, we're looking at this kind of thing, what do you think about that? Or maybe their neighbors would say something, I don't know. But secondly, and more importantly, and I think this gets to what Commissioner Sargent was talking about, the biggest revelation for me in the home childcare was how horrible and unsafe most of the older homes were, and that the state inspections for the childcare purposes were focused on strange and trivial things like whether the diaper cream had expired, and whether the files were in alphabetical order, instead of, is the fire exit blocked? And is the, is the electrical inspected? And did the deck have a building permit so it doesn't collapse? And, and things like that. And it took us a few months, but we got to a point where with some additional work from staff, and it was a big burden for us, when someone applied, when they came in for this kind of local blessing, we sent out a code inspector, and we find out that, you know, half the decks are uninspected, and are we going to approve these if we're not sure that the deck has been permitted and inspected, isn't going to fall down? Are we going to allow people to sleep in a place overnight where there's bedrooms in the basement that don't have a proper fire exit, or there's not a fire extinguisher, or there's storing combustible material on top of a furnace, or there's a swimming pool that's unfenced? And, I mean, Leslie would know, I mean, the litany of things that the inspectors come back with, probably on more than half the cases, particularly our districts where maybe, as opposed to PDH, where the homes are older and people have done sort of homemade renovations over the years, it opens up a can of worms. Anyway, I mention all that, just to get people thinking, because Commissioner Sargent said about safety, if the locality is going to be blessing this type of operation, I think there is some expectation on the part of the consumer that somebody at some point, I don't know if it's the fire marshal, or if somebody has looked at something, that it's not a fire trap, that it's not going to burn down in the night and the fire exits are blocked, or that the deck was properly assembled, and if they have three people sitting on the deck, the whole thing doesn't collapse and people injured. And that kind of public health and safety responsibility, which we may be embracing without really meaning to, without really understanding the staffing implications of checking up on all these people, maybe it works, but maybe part of this process has got to be, if you're coming in to join the registry of this, you're going to have to have a code compliance inspection, and you're going to have to fix your blocked fire exits. You can't have people sleeping in basement bedrooms that don't have an approved window well, that may cost you $20,000 to put in, and your swimming pool is going to be properly fenced, and some, you're not going to be storing your cardboard boxes on top of a furnace, or whatever that is. Maybe we want to go there, and maybe we don't, but childcare and sleeping babies and children is one thing, but I think people sleeping overnight in a house is getting close to that. And maybe we, maybe there's that whole side to it, and I don't know that any of the questions dealt with that, and I don't know if the board's thinking about budget and staffing and additional time pressure.
Overall, I mean, that's a big issue, and I don't know that we.
It's a horrendous issue, and it slowed us way, way, way down on childcare. However, I think at the end of the day, we feel better about where we were. At least one of those cases that we had problems with had a very serious fire afterwards, nobody was hurt, and the problem we had was about the swimming pool, I think, rather than the fire issues. But there are jurisdictions where decks collapsed because they weren't inspected, and people have parties in these houses, and there are jurisdictions where there's a fire at night and people can't get out, and the smoke detectors don't work. I can't tell you how many houses don't have smoke detectors, or the batteries are dead, or they're disconnected to things. This is a huge, huge issue, and there may be liability for the county if we're approving a use but not checking up on it. I don't mean to get on the soapbox, but that really troubled me with childcare, and I wonder about it on this.
I'd have to check the bill, because I, you raise a good point. To be honest with you, I don't know where the board would go on that. I don't know that the county has those kinds of resources when you think about the numbers that, that are out there, and, you know, people are entertaining it, and maybe it's more of a, you know, maybe there's a disclosure saying that you're doing this, that you're kind of like with the agritourism, you know, you're going to a farm and, you know, beware, you, you know, there are dangerous things here, so, but it's a very valid point.
Commissioner Murphy?
I don't know what it fits into the mix, and what about ELOPs with one bedroom and an office with a futon? Way to pay your condo fee. And I think they're going to be becoming more and more popular around here, and young people with rotations of friends and whatnot coming into town to go to Washington Convention Center to learn how to use computers in case they're on Planning Commission.
They could break the code. They know how to start it up. I think they got a head start on.
Commissioner Stranley?
The Land Use Committee has a specific liability waiver fostered by, in the General Assembly. The general liability is not enforceable. Lake Barcroft, G. Height, pre-injury liability waivers are not enforceable, so that wouldn't, you'd have to go back and get Airbnb, a special statute.
Commissioner Flanagan, again, Commissioner Hurley, and then we give, we can move on to the outreach and next steps, so we can at least get that, and then we can circle back with any other questions.
Yes, on the safety issue, three of the 11 questions on the questionnaire deal with whether there should be, owners should be present or should be allowed to be elsewhere. And if you say that, then if you answer yes, you're asked to tell how many nights per year, but you're not asked why you think they should be present. You just, you only ask how many nights they should be allowed not to be present or present. So it seemed to me like the questionnaire, could we could get to this other issue of safety or that sort of thing? The questionnaires just said why, explained why you say that you think the owner should be present, and that way, some people would be able to volunteer the information like Commissioner Hurd was discussing.
Okay, we'll look at that.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hurley?
Two wildly different points. One is, if we're licensing, regulating, whatever, are we collecting information and therefore finding out more income and therefore they're going to be paying more taxes somehow? I don't know how that's fitting into the whole process. And secondly, when you're differentiating between single-family dwellings, townhouses, et cetera, this might be another time to differentiate between our favorite exempt and non-exempt areas that have different rules. If you're within a half mile of Metro, we would encourage it more because those are the people that can walk to Metro and go down to the convention center and learn how to use computers, as opposed to the people out in the aqua pond on their five-acre properties. We might have different sets of rules for different types of areas, not just different types of house.
Okay, and I guess we can move on to the outreach and next steps, if you can just briefly go over that, and then we'll open it back up to questions from the committee.
So as previously mentioned, we are scheduled to appear before the board, the Board's Development Process Committee on July 18th, and next week, on July 27th, we will be briefing the Land Use Aid Committee.
You keep going, and you're thinking it's in July. That's next to you.
June 27th, next week, we will be briefing the Land Use Committee on the same topic. We are planning, and Leslie had mentioned that earlier, to have outreach meetings to the community, to have one-to-one discussions and get as much feedback as possible, and maybe address some of the questions that you had raised tonight in meetings in July and September, and during the month of August, we would also continue to monitor the survey responses, and maybe that would give us an opportunity to meet with other stakeholders that would be interested to come in and meet with us one-to-one from either the hotel industry, tourism industry, or, like you mentioned, operators and hosts that may be interested in talking to us, so we'll be around and be meeting with people. And then, the final comment I have is to please forward the link to the survey and the website. The website, in addition to status update of upcoming meetings, it would be updated with any additional information we may have and want to distribute to the public. It also has a link to our Code Compliance Department, and it kind of outlines what the process is for anyone that may want to report illegal use. With that, I will take any of your comments or questions.
I would also add is that we are also starting like frequently asked questions, so we will populate that as, as we hear those questions, and we need to clarify.
And this goes to Commissioner Hurley's point about the summertime and everything else, and you're talking about July for meetings, for taking it out to the community. What do you have scheduled, and what are you looking at? Because I know in Lee District, we have a Land Use Committee that will be meeting in July as many other land use committees, and then they go dormant in August, and then they come pop back up in September. Is there something that, I know the survey's still ongoing, so is it something that you're, what are you trying to do in July with the community, the greater community?
Well, there's, and we're still, we haven't set any specific dates, but we're looking probably the latter part of July, because we just need some lead time to get the word out and get that. And what we were thinking about, to tie this together with, and doing a number of things, you know, we were, we were looking at strategically going to different parts of the county. I mean, we definitely do a session in South County. We're looking probably in the Mason District area, and maybe, you know, McLean, and then the Government Center area, so somewhere where we can be central, where people can get access to here. We also will probably use the opportunity to not only talk about short-term rentals, but we have a couple of other amendments, the rear yard coverage amendment that are also, you know, citizens may have comments about, so we'd like to, we're trying to think about a format rather than us standing up there and, you know, giving a presentation to have more of an open house type of thing, where we can have staff available, we can have people come in and talk to us, you know, about the different amendments, we can have our Zoning Ordinance Amendment work program available, and then, we can then also do, you know, kind of have a presentation halfway through and then have more, you know, open meetings. So that's kind of, we're. So that's kind of, we're still, we're still kind of evaluating how we're going to present that, but that's kind of what we're looking at now. Did you want to add anything?
Yes, that, that was it. So we would go out to different parts of the county and try to hold community meetings so that more people would be able to attend.
Ma, I suggest when you go to the Land Use Aides in the end of June for each supervisor, maybe get some advice from them in addition to us about getting it out in July to the Land Use Committee. So it's, it's early on, on the radar there and they can take the survey, they can ask questions and get involved and then follow it through to whatever we do in September or the end of July, rather than them not knowing about it until, say, September and then we have, we've gone through quite a bit of this public outreach.
Right. And I know with the minor modifications, they've got one scheduled north and south. I think with the short-term rentals, we probably need more than just-
This will have more community input than-
Yes, I agree.
The previous mention. Just a second. Commissioner Hennehme, Commissioner Najelski-Eitner, and then Commissioner Flanagan.
You took my words out of my head.
For a week. Mr. Najelski-Eitner.
Can I try that? Whatever. This is an off-the-wall question, but it's one that is similar, is so pervasive now that so these links, the link that we're, we're asking people to, to use, are we offering any security? Are we doing anything to assure that there's, that the, the people receiving? So if I'm sending out a link to, you know, probably specific people, you know, it's a wonderful phishing opportunity for someone to, to try to put nefarious bad things out of where. And so I, it's, that's off-the-wall, but hip to give my thought.
Well, you know, I, we're, we're kind of relying on our Public Affairs Office and our IT folks.
So the security folks, just ask them.
No, that's a, that's a good question.
Great. Best practices, Lily, as part of your work, have you, this is not new to Fairfax and other communities are, are working with this issue. And are there models now that, that are, that we're using to help shape our internal dialogue?
Yes, we have been looking and monitoring the amendments that are in place and those that are pending right now in different jurisdictions, just not in Virginia, but throughout the nation. There is an extreme out there. Some are very lenient, some are very strict. So what we're trying to gauge is what, what would work for us. We're, we're putting out all those issues that have come up in other jurisdictions and we will address each one of them, but we will take all of them, we'll be considering all of it. But there is, there are regulations on each extreme. Some allow, you know, rental without owner occupancy requirement for 360 days. Some are very limited to renting with owner occupancy all the time. Some allow up to 180 days. Occupancy would be determined if the, if it's your primary residence for 180 days. Some would allow up to 90 days if the, if it's owner occupied. If not, if it's not owner occupied, it can be rented up to 90 days. If it is owner occupied, you can rent it out for 365 days. So we're looking at all types of-
And so I want to just get back on Mr. Hartz, Commissioner Hartz's consideration of the implementation. So it's one thing to have the regulation.
Right.
It's another that actually I have to execute against it and there must be communities who have already-
Arlington County has, has legislation in place that goes into effect July 1. We're looking at that. I mean, we can, and actually, we can share that with you. I mean, we can send you some of that and we, I mean, Lily's got this huge spreadsheet. It's just so much information, but we can, you know, we can make that available if you're interested and, and get you the Arlington County provisions. And Charlottesville has, has put something and they did a, and they basically treat it as a home occupation with certain regulations. The city, Town of Blacksburg has, we've looked at theirs. They've done some with, again, limited amounts of whether you're owner occupied, you can have so many days. If you're not owner occupied, you're, you're more limited and, and certain other things. So, I mean, we, we do, we have done a lot of research on that. I mean, we've, we've looked at San Francisco, we've looked at Santa Monica, New Orleans.
Everywhere. And we are finalizing this spreadsheet that has all the information, the breakdown of what is allowed where and what is prohibited where. And we will be sharing that once it's, you know, finalized and we have all the information, but it's a, we need a more spreadsheet.
And we're going to be probably putting some of that out with the, with our presentation to the board in July.
I was assuming that you were doing that. And I've not listed in your spreadsheet right now, but it will ultimately, we'll compile the results and so on.
We'll definitely share that.
Commissioner Stranley, Commissioner Flanagan, Sargent.
Thanks. I just wanted to make a comment in the, in the survey. I, when I took it, it seems a little skewed as it's given that something is going to happen. And I would suggest adding none of the above, because there's a lot of them that wanted to say none of the above. If that, that would be possible.
To all, are you saying to all the question?
In particular, number 10.
Okay.
And I can go back and look at them again, I scrolled back, but there's, there's-
I'm sorry. The survey also allows you to skip all of the questions except for the first one where it's asking you whether you're a resident or non-resident.
I think you need to have affirmative, none of the above, as opposed to I'm tired and I'm not taking the rest of the survey, if that makes sense. The other thing is if you actually, in response to Commissioner, the, if you, if you link to the actual webpage, it's not going to look as nefarious as just Survey Monkey. So they'll get the actual background, so I'm not too concerned about that. The big thing is I hope you will do webinars. I say this all the time. But if you do put the webinar together, then you'll have the entire explanation and you can do it live the first time and have people ask questions. And then people who are at the beach, wow, I can sit here and watch this webinar.
Good point. Get that.
Thanks.
And they can watch it at the beach.
Exactly.
Why would you?
Different question.
Correct the spot.
Commissioner Flanagan.
Leslie, you and your staff have met with the Land Use Committee of the Mountford Council, you know, previously. And I'd like to put in a, a hold on July the 2nd, which will be their next meeting. You can put me down for your outreach at, on that date if you would put that on your calendar. The, and as you know, since you've met with them, that they work best with alternatives that, when you present them with alternatives, then they begin to, you know, see what the differences are, you know, that they can get, get their ideas formulated about. Whereas if you just hit them with, what do you think we should do based upon the legis, legislation, you know, they will just, you'll get a blank, you'll draw a blank on that. But I do think that some sort of alternative examples, like you were just talking about, you know, in other parts of the state would be helpful.
Commissioner Sargent, then Commissioner Hartz, and we need to start wrapping this up. Commissioner Hurley.
I think just furthering the, the issue of clarification of roles and responsibilities where legal authority comes from. You know, in, in the state language, it talks about authorizing a creation of registry. So that's pretty small compared to authorizing the, permitting the creation and allowance of use of a, of a short-term rental. Creating a registry is quite different from actually permitting the use to take place, I would think. I'm not an attorney, I take that, so one, one point. Then we have, so in other words, it's a fairly narrow definition within the state legislation of what's, of what's being described here. Then you look at our own June 7th memo to the Board of Supervisors, which talks about presence of short-term rentals and, you know, how we're, we're investigating this. And the language includes working group, the goal of drafting zoning ordinance regulations for short-term rentals, in accordance with the grant of legislative authority in Senate Bill 1578. Well, once again, that's legislative authority made for a specific purpose. So I think, and I'm not going to try and debate it because I'm not sure how correct I am, but the point is, it's vague enough that, that it requires, we shouldn't assume through the communication, we've done enough to say, okay, here's where the authority comes from, here's what's, here's what it doesn't do, here's, you know, be as specific as possible. I see what you're saying about the Arlington, Arlington model and what they've done, so they are, you know, and where they are. They almost get enough into safety requiring smoke detectors, fire extinguishers and things like that. It seems like it might go farther than that as you, as you review, but thank you.
Commissioner Hartz.
Thank you. I wanted to come back to the outreach meetings for a second. I have not been a big fan in the past of meetings that combined and had strange combinations of topics. And the, the outreach meeting that I'm thinking of, we had the bark and dog thing-
Was noise in group assembly.
And the group assembly thing. And it had two very different apprehensive, worried crowds. And it seemed like they played off each other and then the presentation of both of them was much more of a mess than if, if the focus audience had been there for each and people who were engaged in that. They both became unwieldy and very difficult for the staff doing it, I thought. And there was really, I don't remember the reason why that was combined, but combining this with rear yard coverage, it seems to me, you know, there's homeowners involved, but people are going to have different issues. And I'm not sure if we can, if we can keep it focused on one topic or the other, if they're both kind of substantive issues, let's try and, let's be, if we want to combine them, let's be absolutely sure that there's a reason for doing that.
I second that.
Okay. We're, you know, we're just struggling with a lot of meetings, a lot of things that are going on and it's just, you know, we're trying to do this as quickly as we can and keep moving forward.
Maybe a less contentious one that can go with it.
That's fine.
Commissioner Hurley.
Just a short comment, Kim, hopefully, but in with the childcare, are the homeowners associations, and we don't enforce the homeowners associations, but just somewhere in there point out that if you're a homeowners association, you might want to check with them, but we're not going to make our zoning decisions or our regulation or whatever based on your home. Just some way of mentioning, go check with your own HOA and you know, so that I guess.
Condo, same issue, terms of condo documents.
Well, let's just, let's move on to the scheduling part. Kim and the Planning Commission staff can look for a date in September for this committee and then possibly a workshop that we may need because I don't think we've exhausted all of our questions here.
Right.
And I'm sure that if we had a two-hour meeting, we still have more questions. And then if we opened up to the public, we'll have a full two-hour meeting with just the public's comments, so we can take a look.
So you want to look for a date in September?
Yes.
And a date for a workshop? Is that what you're?
Yeah, let's see what flexibility we have and maybe that we just go straight to the workshop and not have a committee meeting and, and that might be the best path, but we can regroup in early September and talk to Leslie and company to see how the survey went, their outreach with the community and what we had going on there. Yes, Mr. Najelski.
Just on that point though, in September, would, would there be enough of your work accomplished that there would be something substantive to kind of consider, like options or is that going to be far enough, going to be far enough long?
I hope so. You know, part of what, you know, I mean, we have ideas now, but, you know, again, we didn't, we don't want to be preset things. We want to kind of gauge what the toler, as Lily said earlier, we want to kind of gauge what the tolerance level is so that we can go back to the board and say, okay, this is what we've heard. And yet we, we wouldn't have had all the citizen meetings, but, but I think we're, we'll be informed and then we can kind of ask for some direction, you know? How far does the board want to go with this?
And on that, I just worry that in July and not getting to people in August, they may not have enough citizen input, so this might be a way to help-
Get some more.
Wrap it up and put-
A workshop?
Yeah.
That would have citizen involvement?
Most likely we'd have to get down there.
We've done that, we've done workshops before where it's a meeting of the planning commission, it's not a public hearing per se, but it's, it's advertised on the planning commission's website. We would advertise it and, and we, staff usually makes a presentation. We can give, you know, where we're at, maybe provide some concepts and some more specific proposals. And then the planning commission typically allows them to come in and-
I'm more, I value the workshop experience personally, I value it more when there's some, something more concrete than the abstract.
I agree. That we would have some kind of a proposal for the planning commission to react and for the citizens, like a straw man.
Related to all of that, when you're scheduling for September, we need to get a meeting on policy and procedures to talk about the whole community engagement and the taskings we are given by the board, et cetera.
Okay. Well, if we have nothing else on this topic, let's, we have a motion for adjournment.
Before we do that, Mr. Chairman, the people who are, are not at the table, is there anything that they would like to-
Commissioner Flanagan, it's 8:10. We have five minutes to get to the-
Well, we just have last commission.
Appreciate the effort, but it's not tonight.
Yeah.
So move, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned to 8:10. Thank you.
Somebody else can get up.
Yes.
Can you, can you get a little closer to October? That's fine.
I'll have John calling, he does this sometimes.